Revenue projections. The Finance Director and I have gone through with the staff these revenue projections and we're very confident in the numbers. They're based on what we call in the industry primarily this late in the year, actuals. These are actual amounts that determine what the revenue projection is. And we have re-reviewed for about the third time, a number of these revenues as requested. There was a slight change to one of them that was brought up, and that's the cable TV revenue, and that is a decrease of $13,500. But the revenues that were reviewed included property tax, the red light camera, transient occupancy tax, utility users' tax, and franchise fees. We will, and our Finance Director will demonstrate and maybe explain in greater detail, permit fees that were brought up pertaining to the hospital project expansion, that the revenues are $68,000. However, it needs to be emphasized that 43,000 of that will be costs associated with inspections and things of this nature, so that the net is approximately $24,000. The property tax percentage is about 1.8%, and that's what we're seeing. I had stated last week that we look at these trends throughout Southern California. And a few days after our meeting, I happened to notice in Santa Ana, the city of Santa Ana, that was on the brink of bankruptcy last year, bouncer budget this year, and they also noticed a slight increase in their property tax. And another trend that I've noticed ever since coming to the city of Los Alamitos, seeing some of the houses, four bedroom listed, about $770,000, up to even recently $780,000. We know the Olson Home Project is doing quite well, too. You will see that, based on our discussions, we have cut out the business license clerk receptionist position. We've also cut out the COLAs to part-time employees. But we'll be reviewing, as it was discussed, looking at some type of schedules and management practices because part-timers are important to the organization. And our Park and Rec Director just stated today in our staff meeting that he's been losing some, even as we meet here today. Also, it was about a day after our meeting, we were provided with some good news from the county about a rebate for administrative fees in the amount of $71,578. And a potential use of those funds could be for the emergency generator or whatever the City Council decides, but we know that that is an emergency purchase and we could supplement it with other funds. As it stands now, we're projecting a $27,000 budget surplus, which is about double, which was provided at the mid-year review. And at this time, I would like to call on our Finance Director to respond more fully and comprehensively to the concerns that were expressed last week.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Council members. Welcome to the follow-up meeting for the 1314 proposed budget. Quickly, I just want to point out, we have, we will incorporate any changes into the proposed budget as directed by council tonight, and if it's feasible, we'll still be bringing the item forward for adoption on the 17th. So I just wanted to point that out. If not, we can possibly adopt at a special meeting at a later date. The three items, three general areas we're going to look at, I'm going to go over the revenue line items, and then we'll talk a little bit about some of the items that are in the staff report. And then also, I brought an Excel spreadsheet, which we can use at the end of the meeting to make any changes, and we can see the update to the budget bottom line. So with that, I'll talk a little bit about the methodology we use to determine our 1213 budget, or 1314 budget. First off, we start with reviewing receipts to date. So we have information through May 31st. That leaves really just June to project, plus accruals for July and August. And if we look, we can look at that in a second, but when we get to the report, you'll see these columns. And then I, from that, we're driving forward to 1314. We use reasonable and conservative estimates based on our past experience, collection trends, and then other information we gather from consultants, other agencies, economic trends, things of that nature. So if we look at property tax, we can see that our original budget, or revised budget, 2.884. Year-to-date, we're actually a little ahead of the budget at this time through May 31st. And then our projected revenue accruals, that's based on prior year accruals and also prior year June. We're looking at additional $54,000. So a revised 1213 projection puts us at 2.947, which then carries forward to our 1314 projection, and we can see the bottom line, we're up 1.8% compared to the updated 1213 projection. And I just want to note also that the county assessor, he provided information to cities a while back, and he was predicting roughly 2% countywide growth. So we feel like this remains conservative. And as the City Manager pointed out, we, there's a recent court case that found in favor of cities, it lowers our administrative charge. You can see that, the second line from the bottom there. Going forward, we'll be paying a little less to the county to administer property taxes. And we also get that one-time refund within the next couple of weeks of $71,000.
Sorry, we have a question.
Sure.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to reconcile now our new property tax slide to what was given to us at the beginning, which we have really been focusing on from the May 6 packet.
Sure.
And, because the numbers are a little bit different now. And the big difference in the numbers, just to cut right to it, is the 54,510 there projected, you didn't have that in the previous numbers. So that 2.947 was actually just 2.8 from the previous. So it only makes it look like we're really projecting up 1.8, but the reality is, we're back to where we were at at 2.89, which is the real number that we're at now, right?
That's the actuals we received to date. The column with the 54,000 represents additional revenues we'll get in June and accruals that happen in July and August. And that's based on what we received in those same periods from the year before.
So...
We're not done receiving all our revenue yet for this fiscal year.
Okay. So the, I mean, I guess from my perspective, what I'm looking at up there is I see the actuals at 2.9 approximately, and that's real. The 54,000 is projection, and then all the way up to 3.1 is projection. So the total net-net projection is 108, of what we're going to really be increasing from. Of that 54,000 is, like you say, you have up there, and another 54,000 of growth. So it's really bigger right now than 1.8. And, you know, I guess I'm just uncertain, you know, property tax is paid in what, December and May or April? So what is lagging now for us to get property taxes at this point?
There's still additional items. I'm basing that on actuals from last year that still come in throughout the year. I can provide that detail if you'd like.
Okay. Now, I'm just, I'm trying to crosswalk. The projected number was significantly different on your new slides and in the staff report for this week than it was on May 6. I was just trying to get a reconciliation.
Yeah, and I'm trying to do that because I'm showing the original budget to projection, and then I'm showing the three columns in the middle are kind of how we're getting there.
Yeah, it's page four of the budget workbook, or on the May 6 agenda, page four.
So we're already in excess of what we'd budgeted for 1213 at this point, and we still have three more months to go.
So the, I guess the reach for us on the council is that we need to believe that there's potentially an increase of the 54 plus another 54 to get to the number for next year is, you know, the 54 may or may not be real for the current year based on last year's projections. But, I mean, if you've added that in, it would be what, about 3.7% if that 54 doesn't happen in actuals? Because that's what we were reacting to initially.
Yeah, no, I understand. And I apologize for not having this more detail for the council at that time.
So can I ask you, throughout the entire rest of the revenue discussion, have you, is the big difference, is that we didn't have projections to year-end?
We didn't, we didn't have updated projections. Our 1213 budget needs to be updated to be more accurate for the next year's projections. So I didn't have that column, and I apologize for that.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Do you have questions?
Transient occupancy tax, I have six years of actuals here. The eighth line down says projected, but we already have received three of those four quarters already, so we're really just projecting the fourth quarter. And that's projected to end with $96,000. And you can see our trend during the recession, some serious declines in hotel activity. And then we've rebounded 15%, 10%. We think we'll end 1213 at 9, and we're continuing to, but at a slower growth rate for 1314 at 7%.
Before you get off...
Sure.
But still, the highest year we've had was back in '07-'08, and then it dropped significantly.
Yes.
And we look to see what caused the '07-'08. Was there some type of other activity? I think what was mentioned at the last meeting is we've not added rooms.
Right.
And so it has to be with either room turnovers, activity going on, Disneyland opened something that year that brought in some, or, you know, I think, looking forward, especially the first quarter of the new budget, with the folks coming in from out of town for the All-Star game, is going to have a boost. I can see where that's going to occur, but that's still a pretty significant jump, and we've not seen that kind of jump so lately.
Yeah, we're basing on a percentage growth. If you look at 1011, we are up 15%, 10%. We're actually tapering off the growth rate by lowering the projection. We actually grew by 15% from 1011, from 910 to 1011. That's almost an $11,000 increase. And again, I don't know what was going on in '07-'08, but we do have increasing rates over the last five years. And again, at '08, we were at almost 101,000, and this year 103, which is almost...
Have the room rates increased? Is that what's causing this?
I haven't called the hotels to ask them, but it would have to be the room rates would be increasing and the occupancy levels would be increasing. They may have only been at 50% occupancy during some of those years when...
You talked the other night about historic knowledge and retention. Somewhere, it would be nice for us to be able to capture some of this, so that we have an idea why it wound in one year. At the end of the year, in other words, at the end of the year, we were significantly higher than we were the prior year. To have some kind of a note file somewhere that says it happened in this month because of, you know, the base does a lot of stuff. It brings in out-of-town people as well. And there may be something that occurs. It would just help, I think, in the projection. The other part of it being is, is, you know, are the rates going up at the hotels? We're making the assumption, but we don't know. And it would help to know that, even, we'll potentially come back from an audit standpoint. I know in Anaheim, where that's a huge number for them because of the amount of rooms that they have, they actually go out and monitor what the rates are, and their projections are a lot tighter because of the amount of rooms that they have available. We don't.
We could begin that. That could be a new program. It'd be very easy just to put it in fine.
Yeah, it would help, I think, just because we've talked about why it had happened that year and it's not happening this year. You know, like with the hospital fees, this year being significant, it's kind of a one-time scenario that you'll have to 10 years from now to kind of figure out why it did that.
Okay.
Okay.
That's a good policy to implement.
Mayor, just one real quick. Josh, what is the actual, real actual number, like, received today? Is it the projected? That's the actual? Is that through, like...
You want to know what I'm projecting on top of the 1213?
Well, no, your other numbers, the way that you did it, I'm just trying to pick up on your methodology. You say what your actual is today, whatever the last day was, it was as a 5.1.
Yeah, I didn't, yeah. I can get, can I send that to you? I don't have it on this slideshow.
You think it directionally is less than the 96?
Oh, yeah. I mean, because this 96 includes three-quarters of actuals plus what I'm projecting to finish for that fourth quarter. But the fourth quarter is in line with what we've received each quarter.
Yeah, go ahead and send that to me.
Okay.
Put the same methodology, basically.
Yes.
Yeah. The other slides, he stated it, but I...
So I guess those were just on that. The 96, you wouldn't be surprised if we're pretty much on top track for 96,000?
Yeah, 96 would be, I'd be fairly confident in that at this point, since I know it's really only one more payment we're going to receive for that amount.
We'll get that information. We could either email it to you, or put it in the weekly at home, and we'll get it to you.
So the 103,000 on that is just a guesstimate based on the increases that have been out?
Yeah, it's a trend.
It's actually, as we look at it, he's trying to be conservative. It's a smaller percentage than has occurred in, what, '06-'07 for many years? Oh, a percentage.
Are you guys ready?
Yes.
Okay. So this is franchise fees. Again, City Manager mentioned, on this third review, we did cut the projection by 13,500 on the cable franchise fees. We can see the projected accruals there coming in. And also, some of these items, we receive once a year. So they're like, for instance, electrical and gas and water. We've already got those and we know what they are. And we can see our increase on the other side. The largest increase is that, well, then the bottom line is our other, it's our pipeline franchise. That's sort of can be all over the place. But the trash line, the second line, 5.5%, that's where we have a guarantee from our hauler to always pay us 200,000, but it's on a calendar year basis. So the true-up doesn't occur until December. So if the activity is below 200,000, then again, we won't reach 200,000 until the next true-up. So it's really a timing issue. Is there any other questions on these items?
So you look at the cable over the last few years, I don't know if you have the staff report, but is it trending downward?
I believe it's trending upwards.
Oh, it is?
But I can, I can double-check that for you.
Then are we seeing a downward adjustment for...
Well, it's a downward adjustment in the projection. Our original budget was 140,000. Right now, we're projecting to end the year at 160, so we're actually 20 ahead. But we decided to be prudent and pull back our 1314 projection by 13,500 to 165. So we see it growing, but just slower than...
So your predecessor had overestimated, basically, for '12 and '13?
Well, they, I think they underestimated.
Underestimated.
Underestimated. They, 140 was the budget, and we're going to probably end up at 160 or 159.
Got it wrong, I think.
Yeah.
I did the same thing earlier.
So the cable fees come in on a monthly basis?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Oh, no, I think they're quarterly.
Yeah, because I was going to say it...
Yeah, I think they're quarterly. That's why we're looking at three-quarters at about 40,000, and then one more quarter at 40,000.
Is there a breakdown between Horizon and Bywater?
I can provide that. It's in the detail of the line item.
Just curious, because both seem to fluctuate back and forth. They're both out after each other's gestures.
It's a balance, though, doesn't it?
I don't know. That's why I said, I'm seeing a lot more dishes up there than I've seen in the past.
It's kind of, good news in a way, because with the, you know, internet is an entertainment outlet. See the cable staying up there is good. We're not losing from that.
So Josh, if you're going to answer on Councilmember Bruce's question on the cable, can you just give us more of input on the methodology for the 40? You know, is that a quarter's worth or whatever?
Sure.
In more detail later. Thank you.
Okay. Utility users' tax, bottom line, this category is projected to be flat. Gas was projecting to decrease due to the directions of the trends in natural gas prices, and we're seeing an uptick in the water collections. So we're projecting that forward as well. Do you guys have any questions on these?
Yeah, I do. So on the UUT telephone?
Yeah.
You have a projection of 100 grand. We're burning at 485 right now. So you have a projection up to 585. You know, we did pass the UUT reduction of 1%.
Right.
So that assumption really is a pretty big balancer, because if you took that plus the growth for the following year, that'd be 115,000 total from where you're at today in actuals.
Right.
Can you explain a little bit more detail with the 100,000? It kind of looks like a plug number because it's rounded?
No, I just round it to keep it simple.
Okay.
But that's based on looking at the activity for last June plus July and August, which gets accrued back, and basing it on what I saw the previous year.
But in November, we passed a reduction.
Right, right. It also widened the base, and so I am projecting it coming in 35,000 under budget, and then going forward, a 2.5% increase.
Are you able to tell from January through March or April, month-on-month from last year, what the revenues are trending? Whether it actually is a net running at a reduction or the base theory is actually, the base is bigger?
I could check that. I'll double-check that and send it to you as well.
That would be good from the standpoint of us, because I know a lot of discussion occurred regarding that, whether it was going to pick up business or cost this business in the process.
Right.
And I think the intention was to try to stay neutral.
Well, in fact, we said we would lower it if it wasn't neutral.
Yeah, and that's my point. It's just that we need to kind of look to see specifically on that if we can get a report.
I believe that this only kicked in as of April 1st, so we still would have only a few months of activity.
Even though it was approved in November?
Yeah.
It did start...
My understanding was they had until April 1st, the different phone companies to actually implement, and some of them didn't until April 1st.
So there's not going to be much of comparison use.
Yeah, there's, there's not a lot of data at this point.
Right. I called Josh earlier for that same reason, because, you know, we had lots of discussion over that. And we knew in the first year, even two years, it was going to be hard to project because we weren't sure how it was going to go, if broadening the base would actually bring us to a neutral point. So I, I'm not uncomfortable with what he's done, but I do understand what you're saying for tracking purposes.
We'll continue to track that one very closely.
Thanks, Greg.
Fines and forfeitures are red light cameras. Right now, we're already 105,000 over budget through actual receipts through May. We still have, again, June, July, and August for revenue and accruals. So we're projecting to end the year at 435. And to be conservative, we're putting in a 12% reduction for 1314, down to 385. And I believe that's at a level we actually received back in 910. So that's our red light cameras.
No, go ahead.
I think that it, you know, Troy talked last time about the behavior modifications, safety versus the revenue stream. And it would help, I think, as we move forward with this, we kind of look at that a little bit closer. Initially, when this went in, those were the two intersections. For a period, we weren't getting revenue because, of course, weren't applying the fines. Now, all of a sudden, we're seeing a huge increase. Punitive versus reducing safety. Are we at a stage where moving those cameras to a different location, Cerritos and Los Alamos Boulevard, where the school activity is, you know, if you look at your major intersections that really affect the city, are we at a point where relocating might be a benefit to help in safety, or are we comfortable with where we are? And is it creating improved safety versus improved revenue?
As far as the other intersections, what I can tell you is, when we put in the cameras back in 2005, Red Flex surveyed all of our major intersections, and they came back with recommendations of where to put them. And the two intersections that we put them at were the, really the only two that they were, that they showed any real confidence that they would be effective. They did mention Los Alamitos Boulevard and Cerritos, and Los Alamitos Boulevard and Farquhar as possibles, but they didn't really express a lot of confidence in that. But I guess it's something we can ask them to look at once again with, you know, with whatever survey techniques they use.
It's been nine years, so it might be worth looking at from that standpoint. But again, I'm not sure we have the safety data, which like that we've achieved, what the original goals were, to reduce some of the collisions and things like that. I know when you first put them in, there was a huge onslaught of, they're going to have reunion crashes and everything else. And we've seen a lot of people just, I think, bypassing Los Alamos, going down, when the left turn was eliminated, they're going further down to the long strip.
Right.
To avoid the intersection. In Old Town West, we see it in the morning with them coming in off of Long Island, just to avoid that intersection. It's not just cars, it's trucks that do the same thing. So I don't know, I don't know what the answer is, but are we seeing, are we seeing an action of actuals?
It's hard to say, because our volume of broadside-type accidents occurring within intersections is not one that would, that would really offer a very good sample size to be able to see. I mean, I can tell you, we're not seeing very many intersect, many collisions within intersections. But we are seeing a reduction in people running red lights. So I think common sense would say that, yes, our intersections are much safer because people aren't running red lights as much as they used to. And if you recall back in 2005, we used to receive all kinds of complaints about red light running violations at Cotella and Los Alamitos specifically. And we tried all kinds... And we, we tried all kinds of methods for enforcement. But it, it presented quite a challenge for our officers to safely enforce. You know, to safely get to the violators after, after they was, observe them. So, you know, that's another, another benefit that these cameras provided.
Josh, one last question on that, please. The accrual, is that roughly two months, you figure? Running about a month behind?
I think it's June, I'll have to, I'll get that to you, but I think it's June, July, and August. I base that on what we collected in, in prior years.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Do you want me to send you more information?
No, I was actually just trying to see, because you know, you're, you're, you know, you're reducing the number fifty thousand dollars from the projection to this fiscal year's projection.
Right.
Trying to see if there was an opportunity to actually have more money there than we thought.
Potentially. Again, we're trying to remain conservative with, with the budget.
But a bit at mid-year, you know.
Yeah.
You, you should.
Yeah.
And didn't we, didn't we also say that one of the reasons that they might be higher this year is because of the extra traffic that's coming from all the improvements that are going on? I know people are complaining about that all over the place.
And that's gonna go on for another year.
So, okay.
Yeah.
Those aren't the directions for the cameras to take it.
Well, you can get off at the six oh five to avoid traffic too, so I guess.
Northbound? Yeah, that would be.
We've got them going eastbound.
From southbound to eastbound.
Right, but we've got it going eastbound, assuming that we've got more traffic coming off of the six oh five.
Okay. But the traffic increase may be more northbound to westbound?
See, I was thinking they would avoid down there, come around and get off at the six oh five instead of getting off at Seal Beach. But, you know, I haven't sat and watched the traffic trend, so I couldn't really tell you.
There's only, I think, a direction at the intersection.
I know, I'm not very fun anymore.
Watched, is that not correct?
That is correct, east, east and west. However, whichever direction you figure traffic is going, one way, they're coming back as they're returning from wherever they're coming from.
Either going to work or coming from work. That potential.
As the city manager mentioned in his introduction, we just wanted to be clear on what is actually being budgeted for the hospital construction. We can see that we're projecting the one-time revenue from the plan checks at sixty-eight thousand. And there are expenditures associated with processing those at forty-three thousand, so the net is just about twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars. There's also potential from that construction to generate future revenues associated with the parking structure and, and the buildings themselves. We'll know more about that in the future when, when they are completed.
So is that project starting then with all the stuff we've been hearing about the parking? Is that, is that going to start?
Steven, do you have an update on that?
Yeah, we'll have more, right, but we're pretty much satisfied the parking issue. We'll have, we should have it locked in by the end of the week. And the permit will be ready to issue.
Did we by any chance, I'm sorry, apologies, I thought you were done. Did we reach out to Cottonwood to see if they would be interested in helping us out, or did we just do the base?
Yes, we have.
Okay. And that's all we're saying.
Okay.
I think their, their start date is working on July. It's exciting. It's gonna be really nice.
And that's the parking structure, right?
Yeah, the parking structure has to be finished before the office building.
Right.
You're inside doing the interior assembly.
Other items that were in the staff report that we just want to touch on here is that we cut the part-time COLA. As the city manager mentioned, we'll be reviewing that salary schedules and management practices to see if we can mitigate some of the recruitment and retention issues. And we also removed the business license position. In the report, we talk about online business software and the, again, the prices are provided for informational, information only. They're not in the proposed budget at this time, but when we get to the worksheet, we can see those amounts and see what they do to the bottom line. Staff is also recommending in this report a, that council maybe consider setting up a budget subcommittee that could work with staff during the budget process and provide input and guidance during that process. And also report back to the council on progress during the budget, budget development. And finally, I believe Attachment Two on your agenda reports shows the segregated city manager and city clerk budgets that we have right now in the proposed budget. And with that, if there's any more questions, we can ask them now or we can move on to the, the Excel spreadsheet.
Any other questions from the council? Do you think this answered all the questions we had lingering?
Yeah, I think this was excellent.
Dean?
Yeah, I think so too. I would like to talk about a couple of things because equally wise, the COLA was out there. And basically several segments were considering a two and a half percent increase for part-time. You're saying you have some impact already. I think we need to, the recommendation that was brought up at the last meeting was about looking at those that were permanent part-time and the ranges and whether or not staff had the ability or management had the ability to move within those ranges. Or whether we needed to adjust the ranges in such a way. And I think that's something we really should have on a discussion or workshop further down. I don't want to hold up the budget to doing it, but it will have an impact on the budget depending upon what you come up with. So from the COLA standpoint, I think we need to keep that online to visit. Because we want to be fair to the people that have been working on a regular basis. I'm just a little hesitant with the other MOUs coming up to lock us down on something that comes back to bite us. On the, to jump around a minute here on the budget subcommittee. I know the City of Irvine has a finance committee that includes people much like a commission that are appointed from the, from the community. And you're kind of talking here with a couple of council members.
Yes.
I think that's a, I think that's a great idea. Because it can give a couple of people that are numbers oriented to be able to bet a lot of this in advance. And, and if we, and we need to talk to the attorney, I think, more on how we set that up. I don't know that we could public on a council ad hoc type of a thing. But it's something that it may be an opportunity to allow a couple of citizens to apply that can help us better carry the message back to the community. In terms of we are trying to do things visibly, we are trying to do things conservatively and progressively. And let them be kind of a ambassador if you work for us, much like we expect the commissions to be. I don't know who that would be, but likely the commissions are gonna let them look at it and then potentially a couple of people that could meet, you know, Corvair or something to go through that. Might not be a bad idea.
I wanted to have that, that's, that's, it's like my idea, something I've done in, in the last couple of cities that I've worked in. Haven't done it with, with citizens. But, you know, you mentioned the city attorney and it was my experience, you know, my last city that it was an ad hoc committee with two council members. And like I said, I did that for the last two cities I was in. City attorney told me that, that just to be careful, you can't, it's, it's like you can use it, but don't abuse it type of thing. You know, it's like you try to use it during times that you're considering the budget, which you, but that can go, you know, year, year round. But just not, not to, you know, it's just, it's, it's like a fine line. So they, they don't like them to meet, to, to like have a regular meeting scheduled.
Like a standing, like a standing ovation.
Yes, that's the word, yeah. So that's been my experience. But, but with citizens, yeah, that's, I've never done it that way. I always done it two council members.
Irvine is not a fair example because they've got a great park and they've got all kinds of financial issues that they're looking at. They're helping to recommend what they're doing. We certainly don't have that here.
Right.
We don't have public here, you know, at any of our study sessions for the most part that I'm aware of. We do have a couple.
So I think we can agendaize this for a future meeting and we have a, we can discuss it, so.
Then the last thing I would do is what I did last time. And that's, I would champion for the idea of seriously looking at upgrading our computer systems to include some of that online payment things. Because I've had complaints every year I've been on council from businesses saying, why do we have to fill out a whole form? Why can't we do it online on the new little business licenses? And if we're gonna look at not consolidated modes, maybe we could get some tools to help in that particular process. So I encourage my colleagues to try and think in that way.
Okay, thanks.
Richard, anything? Not at this point. Troy has.
Yeah, you know, my recommendation back in the previous meeting was around the commission had to do more with the way that we attack our commissions within the city. So we have a commission for parks and rec, but, you know, with a little over a million dollar budget. We have a commission for cable, which is under fifty thousand dollars. So my, my specific recommendation was a commission around the police to be able to evaluate the policing components of our, since it is the biggest part of the budget. And, and the area, which I'm sure we'll talk about, is the chief put together a really good budget analysis. But, you know, we have, we have labor negotiations coming up, so there was a lot of pressures in there. And we're gonna talk about that. We have decisions that we're gonna have to make on trade-offs. You know, the, the crime statistics, you know, a couple of times, at least three times this last year during the city council meetings, various council members have brought up, you know, neighborhood watch things and stuff like that. It just seems like if we're going to do, I was thinking more of a commission that would be very similar to the, to the Parks and Recreation or something, since it is the biggest budget item to get community input. I've been on the ad hoc committees from the council and we've done them for various times as we went through. And those are helpful. But, you know, I, I think, you know, the, kind of the unique situation now is we've got a brand-new finance person and a new city manager. And so we're going through, I guarantee you next year will be a lot easier on that. But I think it's the longer-term strategic direction of where's the city going? Can we continue to afford a police department? Everybody wants us to make sure we can do that at a minimum. And Parks and Rec usually is on the other side of the receiving of, you know, hey, you know, we gotta balance this thing. And we're trying to balance quality of life and safety, so that would be my input and that's all I have.
So I got a question for you. Do you know of other cities with their own police departments that have commissions?
I do not.
Okay, what about, have you?
No, but, but this, this is something I've observed in a city recently. But it wasn't so much about police, but they were looking at the global operation of their city and how to operate and the concerns that they had. They had a citizens' commission. It wasn't effective, excuse me, the first time around, they didn't really accomplish anything. So then they, they waited a period of time, then they, they had another commission later on. And they reached the goals that they, they were looking for. Wasn't what they started off with, but I have kind of watched with interest of a city that, you know, did something of that nature. It's, it's the same kind of a concept, but it was for a different reason. Their case was more for, uh, uh, street construction, infrastructure and things of this nature. But it was a very similar concept and it got a number of citizens in the community involved.
Yeah, Warren, what I was kind of anticipating was very similar to our focus that we did with Westcom, which is our nine-one-one dispatch. It's a JPA, but it's no different. It's a coordination of public safety across multiple jurisdictions. It has a really good process to go through and prioritize. The other thing that I think is interesting, and I know it didn't meet with a lot of positive response back in the day. But, you know, that when we were looking through trying to provide contracting services to other cities to be able to balance the overhead. For example, the Rossmore piece, and, you know, a lot of people in the community look at Rossmore one point four million, Los Al, you know, five point four, whatever. You know, am I safer in Rossmore? Well, the reality is, Los Al jumps in if there's a nine-one-one call over there. We do a lot of stuff. And so I think maybe a little bit bigger picture and strategy. And I'm not pushing towards us going again to try to contract and broaden our base with Rossmore. But maybe it's a community process to evaluate public safety that we maybe join with the sheriffs or something that looks at the bigger picture as a regional, you know, public safety issue, just like we did, again, like on the cable commission, where we get people from, that are served by that service, not just people with, that are residents. And we weighted towards the, the residents have the most powerful voice, but the input there or the ex officio type response to having people on it. And that's, that's always, and that would be very helpful when we have to make really hard decisions, even in this discussions coming up for the police officers' union contract. But, you know, we really are going to have to try to think through, because this was a pretty significant impact, what we did the last time. And, you know, you could say, well, chief, and I, I know we're gonna get to this, but eventually we could say, you know, we have to take care of our police, but then we just need less of them and we can't afford less. So then, you know, we're kind of defeating ourselves. So it's those priorities.
Let's see, Long Beach has done some of those, looked at some of those ideas in the past years. And I remember watching which, the Rossmore matter.
Well, that was fun.
Jeff Stew's picture.
I, I'd like to add something. I think before we would base anything on whether or not we wanted to change from our police department to sheriffs, whether we had this commission or not, I think that's something that should go to a vote of the people because there are a lot of people in the past and currently who have very strong feelings about retaining our own police department. I understand what you're saying about the increases and they're significant, but I just don't think that that's something we should make just based on a commission. I think we really need to go to the people to see what their will is.
And I guess I can add on to that too. Like the cities of Brea and Yorba Linda, where they had a single police force that serviced both cities. Brea is in some dire straits with their police because they lost half of their deployment base and they kept all their overheads. So that's something I'd be mindful of in the future, that if we do go down the JPIA or JPA kind of route, that we make it where it's, it's a partnership. It's not a vendor-customer kind of relationship. With that anyways, that's a good discussion.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the budget?
I just want to verify on, I'm sorry, on Attachment One. Under revised expenditures, we have the reserve fund. And it's a hundred thousand dollars to Los Alamitos Boulevard Street Revitalization. Steven, I just wanted to clarify, I think I asked this last time, but if not, you can, you can remind me. This is going to be used for what?
My response at the time was this was not for construction. It was for design, engineering, and outreach.
Outreach, okay.
Wasn't that two hundred thousand at some point?
There's a hundred thousand in a different year.
Okay, okay, thank you.
In a different year.
The other part of that, as long as we're positive about that, is we've gone to the commissions to help with the general plan. To help reduce some of that expense. And that might be something that we could utilize, again, moving forward on a downtown idea and concept, is to go back to the commissions and let them work on a plan and vetting it, maybe with the stuff that came from the stag investment originally, use that as a basis for starting. And have them get engaged with the community and see where they come from. Because the meandering road didn't sit well with people, but I don't think it was really properly vetted out. So we might want, we may be able to save some of that, I would say. Especially if it's just a viable concept that is particularly like using the commissions.
Well, one thing that I, I just want to go on the record is being clear. When we talked about this, I believe in the first meeting, I'm supportive of this money being used for a median and not necessarily for revitalization. I know everybody has their own vote, but just so I'm clear about that. And on the other hand, when we talk about the revitalization, there was also the narrowing of streets. I don't know that they were so concerned, the people that I talked to, and I know we have different friends, the meandering, they were concerned about the, the width of the street being narrowed. Not only was that going to congest the traffic, which was part of what the plan was, to slow cars down so they could see the businesses and visit them. But I think we all know that a lot of the parents use that street to get their kids to and from school and it's already heavily congested. Right now, I work on Los Alamitos Boulevard at a salon there and Right now, I work on Los Alamitos Boulevard at a salon there, and there's not enough parking now. And when I spoke with Jeff Stewart, our past city manager, he informed me that we would lose at least seventeen to nineteen parking spaces. Well, if you're familiar with that area, and I'm sure you are, it's parking permits on the backside. So there's not enough parking now. We would lose parking. And in addition to that, we would be giving that property to the extra part of the street that we were thinking about narrowing. We would give that property to the business owners. I have a problem with that. I don't think that we would be giving, I don't think we should give anything away. I mean, if there's an opportunity and we choose to move forward with it with the majority, then that's the will of the council. But I don't think that we should be not looking into selling that portion, and that puts money back into the coffers to do the development that we want. Because I will go on record and say, I am extremely opposed to spending reserve money on our downtown revitalization when there is absolutely no data that shows that it would increase any kind of revenues for us. I think that's throwing good money after bad.
Any other questions, Carmen?
I look forward to that discussion.
Richard?
Yeah. Josh, on, let's use attachment two. On the bottom half, you have, the first five items come against the reserve as a source, and the other three are unassigned.
Mm-hmm. They're also come from the reserve, but they haven't been, sorry, I didn't mean to jump ahead.
You're actually answering my question.
They haven't been designated or assigned by the councils in the past for those particular uses.
Okay. And then, so if I, just want to make sure I understand this right. Basically, as a city, we are going to show a small, positive, general fund balance for the year. But we're going to spend a half million dollars out of other funds.
Out of the reserves, yeah.
Out of the reserve. So, I mean, I just, I have so much trouble with this, that we're spending money, just because it comes out of a different fund. We're, in English, we're spending a half million dollars more than, than we're taking in.
Correct.
Our reserve is roughly seven three, let's call it, right now. And if I back out the emergency fund, I'm going to call it two point five million to keep my numbers simple.
Right.
And then my pension number of three and a half million, I have six million dollars against the seven three that, that we're already, we're already putting off to the side, let's say. Okay, follow me so far?
Okay.
I could have written this down for you. But, so it's seven three minus six. So we really have an unaccounted for reserve, let's call it, of, of a million three. And yet we're spending five hundred thousand of it here, which is approximately thirty five to forty percent. And we can't do that for more than two years. And until we're cutting into the real meat of the reserve, which is, you know, which is accounting, because I think the council was wise a couple of years ago not to designate money for the pension.
Right.
But I'm hoping we do have a pension discussion during the, during the course of the year as to where we are.
But I just want to go back over the numbers again, and this is per the audited statements of June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve. We have two point three million at that time in emergencies, half a million in workers' comp, a quarter million in OPEB, and two hundred thousand for the downtown revitalization. That totals three point two and a half million dollars.
Okay.
And then on top of that, we have four and a half million dollars that's just unassigned for a total of seven point seven.
Okay.
So, so we're proposing this five hundred thousand. The bulk of it comes from, you know, the reserves that we've set up, and then the rest of it would, would come from that four and a half million dollars.
Okay.
And, and when I look at these numbers, the ones that I see that concerns me are the SRO, because that's an ongoing cost.
Yes.
But most of these other ones will be one time.
Okay.
And when I look back at the history of how the city has performed over the last three years, we've, we've increased our fund balance to the neighborhood of one and a half million dollars.
Okay.
So we've been running a surplus or profit for three years straight. And so, you know, it's the council's will and wish, and how they wish to spend that, but this is...
But the numbers that you spoke of leave out the PERS.
Or the OPEB liability?
Yes, of about two and a half million dollars.
And that's true. That's not money that the council needs to set aside instantly. It can be managed in the future through increased contributions and setting up a trust fund to fund the future benefits. It's not required that we set that money aside right now.
Right, I understand.
Okay.
And that decision, I think, was done a year or two ago.
A year and a half ago.
That, that we're not, and it was, I thought wisely done, that there's no reason to put that money away. But at the same time, you know, when you're, when you don't put it away, you can't get into it. You still, you still have to account for it. And that's, that's my concern here, is, is in my mind, we're working on a surplus of about a million three. And we're spending half, we're spending half a million right now.
Rich, can I ask you?
Sure.
I just got to make sure I'm clear. So I'm a couple of different buckets. The operating general fund is the amount, and the general fund, we're operating on a surplus of eight to nine grand.
Right.
Eight to nine grand, of which Josh believes that we underestimate and overperform, that we end up coming in at the end of year, two to four hundred thousand dollars positive every year. But we actually plan and spend to a conservative estimate, and, and we always have a little bit of residual. And even in this budget, nine to ten thousand could end up being a hundred thousand if the economy gets better. But we've conditioned our spending. And that philosophy is what we've done the last three years, five years, to make sure that we build the reserve back, as it went down below four point eight million four or five years ago.
Right.
So now we're back. Now, the other thing about, we got an excess one point three million. We have reserves that have two major categories, the unassigned and the assigned. And at some point, if you want to get to a point, set aside the medical part as restricted reserve, so we can't touch it, I'm on board. But that way, it kind of cordons it off and says you can't use it for anything. And the press release is, we've covered our unfunded reserve for that medical liability, but we won't spend it until we need it. And today, the policy that we decided is we put two hundred and fifty thousand in that category. And we said, going forward, we're going to pay as we go, because we budget that into our budget in the general fund today. And since we over, you know, under, or overestimate, or we basically make our projections really conservative and we better perform, we were able to cover that on a month, on a month, a year-on-year basis. So we felt good that going at year-on-year was okay, pay as you go. There was three ways to do it, pay as you go is one.
Okay.
So if we take that position, we could, you know, cordon off the reserve. I just want to, I don't feel we have one point three million dollars in excess funds or reserve. As a matter of fact, that, that philosophy, I don't want to look at that as that's money for us to spend. Now I go down to the five hundred thousand that you're talking about for this year, and I look at these, and I do think the SRO is a slippery slope, but it's when we all, we're on that slope together, and it, and we're going there. The other ones, we made decisions like general plan, four years ago, when we did the general plan update, that we understand we can't afford to do it all right now. But like a CIP project, we said, look, if it gets bad in the future, we appropriated for it. And the good news is, every year except maybe this year, we haven't had to dip out of this fund because our over, you know, overachieving in our year-on-year basis has allowed us to suck it up and pay for it in our general fund, not in reserves. So from my view, I want to, I like you, I don't want to get conditioned to think that this reserve is ready to rock and roll. We are getting really loose on what we're seeing will pick up, like downtown, the median, let's do this, let's do that. But I think, you know, and we did the school thing for three hundred thousand to the Oak Gym. I mean, we've done a lot of things because we've been very prudent with our money. But I, I think we continue that philosophy of being very prudent. My whole issue with the budget, when we get to the end of this discussion tonight, is, is the revenue and the garage fund policy change and the impacts. I, I think that when we get to the general fund for what's the surplus, that, that's an issue that we need to kind of separate. And, and I think where your point was, and this is my question, I think you were saying, hey, Troy, I think that we are overspending, and basically we have a structural deficit that we're using reserves to cover. Is, is that your concern? Meaning that general fund, what we take in and what we spend, we try to hit even, and we've hit nine thousand, and we're spending five hundred thousand. Is your view that we are spending more than we're taking in? Because my view is, we're not really taking in more in the reserves yet. We may do better than we think.
We may, but in, in the last, you want to, go ahead.
I just wanted to remind that we received that extra seventy one thousand. This is suggesting that, that, and we could find the remainder, that would take out that hundred thousand.
For the generator?
Yes.
Or the SRO, one of the two.
And, and the pool repairs, we have finally confirmed a meeting with the Aquatics Foundation. It's this Thursday. So we're hoping, and that we can get fifty two thousand, so fifty two of that eighty helps there. When the SRO was, was proposed, the retiring city manager mentioned reserves. And Jerry, you were real that night, she also said, because at that time, there hadn't been anything on the community spending.
Right.
Or the additional revenues that, that we, that we receive.
Right.
And as Troy was saying, you know, the general plan update, that's like a one-shot matter, as is the Los Al Boulevard, the business and residential improvement program, that's another one, is probably to generate goodwill and also maybe some additional. So maybe these can be looked at as like one-shot, one-shot deals.
Oh, yeah.
To a certain extent.
I don't think it was our plan to continue them on every year, and they're significantly less than was budgeted.
Right.
Yeah. Because if you look at the rebate for seventy one thousand five hundred and seventy eight, and you put it to the SRO, let's just say, for example, that leaves a very small amount. Now, I know we can't count on it for next year, but maybe we'll have excess, like Troy is saying, that we aren't expecting, and then that could be money that could be put towards that, just depending on what the will of the council is.
And when we would find that out would probably be when? End of summer, maybe? When, when the surplus with the audit?
Yeah, when we, when we complete the audit, we'll know a lot more.
Should bring that to a council meeting and allocate it.
Okay.
To, to eradicate this.
To get down to the, to the bottom line with your question is, I don't think we're, we're in a disagreement that we are spending half a million dollars more this year than we're taking in. Okay, that, that, that's fairly obvious. It bothers me that the SRO is not in the police budget. It's a three-year deal that we're committed to. It should be in, in the budget. We're going to spend that money. To have it out here is some type of optional thing I strongly disagree with, unless, unless we're really going to have this discussion again. Because if you, if you pull the minutes of that meeting, we, the motion was that we were not going to do it if Rossmore didn't contribute twenty five percent, even though the minutes don't say that exactly. If you go watch the tape, it's very clear, but we had a, we had a, in Wendy's defense, we had like a ten-minute discussion of the motion, and it was like ten moving parts. So it, it, but when you, when you look at it, what the actual motion was, was different than, than where, where we are now. And that, that is part structural to me in that part. Now, the, the generator, as I said before, I'm not against the generator in any way, but it's also not a surprise. You know, in my mind, you're cutting something else to pay for that in, in the long run. Because once we get into the pension discussion, and, and maybe that will be an important one for me, is to figure out where, where we are. Where exactly are we on the pension? Do we really need three point, three point five million to pay our pension, or can we manage it? You know, my impression, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that we're paying as we go, but we're doing nothing about the deficit, the, the older deficit.
The arrears.
We're not, we're not falling behind, but we're not facing the fact that we owe money also. And, and I don't know the answer. That's...
I mean, I think they will talk about that. We are chipping away at it. As, as the thirty year horizon gets shorter, because it's a thirty year Gatsby requirement, it get, you know, what was three one is three, which will be two point eight, if we keep working our way down until eventually we're on par, of which we've only got two fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand set aside. Like I said, the thing I like about, I think where you're going, is that it puts that, some amount more than two fifty, and it puts a fence around it, says we're not going there. And if we keep it at that level, and the liability gets smaller than that number, then it just becomes a good fence area, too, for a council fifteen to twenty years from now.
That's what I'm trying to say, is, is, because we have the emergency fund. In my mind, we need another, just a designation, not a fund. But, you know, there are accounting rules that Josh is under, too, and he can call them. So that's, it's something to discuss that, you know, what, what can we designate this as in order that it doesn't get touched? That, you know, it's like your gas money when you go to Vegas, you know? You, you know you got to leave that fifty bucks in the glove compartment, because you do want to get home, you know? It, but it's tempting on Saturday night when you're broke to, to win for sure type of thing, you know? Things are going to get better. We've spent a lot of money recently out of, out of the fund. And, and so I guess it's, it's more, and I think we've discussed, Mayor, that we're going to visit the pension idea, you know, not, not right now, but, but just to know what that number is. And my real point is, we're spending a half million dollars more than we're taking in. That's, that's the part that we can't get around. And the, and you know, maybe, maybe we get lucky, forty thousand on the pool fund, you know? We, we thought it was coming in a couple of years ago, but it's...
On Thursday night.
And I've noticed...
Those all email all of you.
You know, the, the...
Wait till you have the check.
The community spending priorities have been reduced to fourteen thousand dollars. I thought that number was going to be a hundred and, you know, the proposal, I wasn't for it, but, but the number that was on the budget was a hundred something.
One forty one.
Okay. And the majority of it going towards the trees, which maybe the compromise is we beautify the median, you know, without, in my mind...
Or build a median.
Yeah, right. So, we can't really answer my questions today until we get our, our handle on the pension to know, kind of, what, what cash today do we need to pay our pension liabilities? Because if we, that to me would be the worst thing we can do for the city, is leave it in a deficit where that number, and let's face it, at higher levels, politicians just want to ignore this altogether, as we're seeing in the state. But, you know, we're spending five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars more this year. That's really my, my concern.
So, Eric, can I, I mean, the one thing that you said, you framed an issue, because we're going to talk about it here fairly soon. You said, hey, you know, the issue you have is on the SRO, whether we, we tuck it into the general fund, and we pay for it, and cut something else in general fund, or whether we use reserves to come over and pay for it. And your, the potential option is to find a way to tuck it in, because you said it should be in the police budget. That, that was your...
In my mind, yes.
Yeah. So, I mean, just something to think about, because we're not there, as I've always said, cut things, not people. And, you know, the, the thing that is in the way of that is the capital expenditure of the garage fund. And we have money in the garage fund that we can not go and implement the new policy that we approved without even seeing the financial impact, and pay for the SRO in the general fund, or we take it out of reserve. So, I mean, there is an option there to potentially address this.
And, and I, I think we need, as, as I said last time, I didn't completely understand the garage fund, especially why salaries was in there. I, I thought it had a specific purpose to bill each department for the cost of cars that they were going to need, in a way, spreading the cost over several years. But not, I mean, because to me, the maintenance and all that, that should be, that should be in a different, that should be in an active part of the budget also, not, not in that fund. So another, I'm more than willing to have the discussion.
Yeah. Well, I've tried that for the last couple of years.
Because I'm, I'm trying to understand the garage fund at this point.
Yeah.
The breakdown on the, on the police budget, put the SRO in the budget.
But it's funded from the reserve balance. The resource, the revenue isn't coming in through organically in the general fund.
Unless, of course, we use the seventy one thousand that we got just for this year, and then maybe we become more creative or have a more detailed talk about how we want it. But I, I think the police department was very clear when we asked them the question as to whether or not they could support this. And they said, no, we still decided to move forward with it. So I don't think it's fair now to go back and ask them to cram it into their budget. I think we need to make good on it this year and then have that discussion throughout the next year. Yeah.
I don't disagree, but I, I, I do think that, that it is part of their budget. It's not something, in other words, if they're, if they're making a request to borrow from the reserve to cover that part of it, I think that's the discussion that we have in the process with the position. I know the congressional budget they're working on, I read something where they had asked a portion of the school, schools across the country to have security... the school, schools across the country to have security, or something put in that budget. Have you guys seen any of that, or are you, are you aware of any of that?
I'm familiar with that.
Okay, and you?
Yeah, but I didn't think it was gonna be in this fiscal year. I thought it was for the out years.
I just think we need to be cognizant of it, because there's such an emphasis nationally for doing that, that if that funding is available as a source, we should make sure that we're aligned.
Yeah.
Or not, not miss that opportunity, which means we need to be working with loan ball specifically to try and see, what are they doing to help us in that process on that? And, and, you know, again, I, I think we talked about before, you've got a pie of money that you've got available to spend, and you carve the pie up based on what each of the departments needs, and how they use it. You know, if they've got to put money aside in the garage fund, basically, I'm, I'm opposed to doing what you're talking about, about, you know, using that fund, because that's what happened to it in the past, to fix others. It's like taking something out of this to patch that, and it's...
Dean, I, I gotta clarify. If we're not taking, from my perspective, we're not taking anything out of that fund. We passed a bad policy that now taxes every department, and basically builds a bigger fund to buy things. Now, that bigger fund is a math calculation we approved without knowing what the potential impact is. I mean, just a question to staff, how big is the capital expenditure for the garage fund, just for this year?
I believe it's a hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
So it's a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, and, and that's incremental, right? That's more than what we had last year. And, and so, if you, we can look at that, because it's in this book too.
Yeah.
But my point is, if we didn't implement that policy, we would be having this discussion that we're having of how to afford to keep the police budget intact, and we would say, well, what if we don't buy more cars this year? Well, now, now it's, we would like to say that, but our policy says automatically, you need to, it's, it's a mechanism. It's, and it calculates the number, whatever spits out of it, we're, we're, we're taking it with like a piece of meat. And it, and instead of being able to subjectively now legislate on it, we have to accept it. And that's why, you know, I really had an issue with that. So I don't like the number that got generated. I think it could be potentially used, and I think we could wait a year or two. The chief can definitely tell us what cars definitely need to be able to be replaced. Maybe, you know, maybe it's one, maybe it's all of them. But I would rather cut back on cars and pay for SRO for a one-time shot, like Jerry said, than to pay for it out of reserves. Now, to be fair to the chief, if we go back to that tape, which I haven't went back and looked at, and we look at the staff report, which I didn't look at, if it said in there fiscal impact, pay out of the reserves, then we approved it out of the reserves, and I'll take the medicine at that point. I, I just don't remember what it said. But if it didn't say that, then this is fair game to have this discussion, and potentially readdress our policy before we approve our budget.
And I don't know that we can do that before the budget, but I think we can give staff direction to hold on that, on those items out of the budget until we have a discussion, because I'm, I'm supportive to go back and look at it, because I think those are some of the things that we need to look at, specifically if they're saying in there, and I don't recall the, those specifics in the process. Obviously, I must have voted for it.
Oh, you did.
And Troy did not. Tony, do you have it?
We're talking, we're talking, I'm sorry to interrupt. So we're talking, so the SRO, I believe, was, is, is one of those areas. But like the generator, that was covered. I think we did make that deliberate decision.
You know, Warren, the, the hard part with me, and I'm with you, the generator, we've always said, but, you know, we actually, last year, gave Cassie approval, and said, you know what, you need new phone system?
Yeah.
Pay for that out of reserves. Well, that got actually absorbed in the operational budget. So, you know, we gave a pass on that, and then the generator popped up. I might have strategically demanded us a little bit, went with what we kind of said we would go with. It's the same thing, it's almost the same amount. I think the generator's one hundred, and the, the phones are one forty-six. So, but, you know, it's just bookkeeping.
I understand. But again, I, I think that to go back and revisit that, I mean, we already had that kind of discussion. So I've tried to, tried to pare it down to something that we really wanna tackle. I think the SRO is a, is, we have to go back and look and see how to be appropriate. And then from there, we, do we really wanna bring it back for us to address? If it's been solved, I think we, like Troy said, we take our medicine, we go forward.
Well, what we actually said in the minutes was that, that, that the chief would investigate the possibility of a reduction. So there was no, no real agreement on anything, okay? We just, we just said, could, was kind of the question to the chief, could you look for a reduction? Yes, I can look for one, but as it turned out, we didn't get, there wasn't, there wasn't room for one, it just didn't happen. So, and if you look at the actual tape of the minutes, it, it does, it, it's completely different than what, what ended up being.
So I think that, that'll be that, as Dean suggests, let's set that aside and have that discussion to really understand where we're gonna get the funding for that for this year, and then we have to look forward for the next couple of years, right?
Okay, and then, go ahead.
On that same, same area, I love that meeting, being that we were in agreement that, that we needed to do it, but not that we had voted to do it, because there wasn't clarity at that time regarding the funds coming from the school district, the funds coming from COB.
And the school.
And the, and the potential some funds coming. And because of the timeframe, it kind of went out of that room, that it was a done deal. And I've had people say, why are we doing it? We don't need guns in the, in the schools. We don't need a uniformed officer in the school. Those are, so I'm not sure that it got better, because the horse has left the park, and we're kind of in a situation, a slippery slope, we gotta, we gotta figure out how we do that, because everybody's expecting that's where it's going. But I don't think if we went back and looked or listened to that tape, that, that we actually made, at least, I didn't come away from it feeling we had made a firm commitment, that we had made a decision we would move that direction. And, and I do remember the thing being from the standpoint of, I, I think we do need to have that discussion. Not so much the SRO, but just that whole, that whole process.
Okay, and Tony, Tony's got the, is it the agenda from when we discussed it? Okay, so can you refresh our memories then?
Sure.
This is regarding the garage fund.
Yes. On the policy, it does state that these are guidelines, okay? And they are targeted dates. And the reason we wrote it that way is so we could have flexibility for situations like this.
Right.
Okay? In the past ten years I've been here, I've always maintained that we can repair anything and keep anything going. So the will, and we have, so whatever the will of the council.
That was, that was my recollection, that's why you asked, because I do remember Tony saying that if we needed to defer for a year, that was still within our purview to do.
Any questions? Okay, just go ahead, and a little bit of housekeeping here. So, opening, opening this up for public comment, if any member of the public wishes to speak about this, to come forward and identify yourself, and seeing that, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and back to us. And I think this is just gonna be received and filed?
Yes.
Okay, so no other questions from the council?
Are we giving direction that works? If we're satisfied with this moving forward then, or are there still some, some things left?
My understanding was you still, certain council members still requested input, so...
On the, what Richard brought, brought up?
And Troy and...
We have a list.
Yeah, there's a list of things.
Follow-up items, yes.
Okay, so you're just really, numerate the follow-up items, and ensure it's all aligned with our expectations?
Talked about a new, new policy to make notations for historical trends, like the transient occupancy tax, or any other type of revenue, or matters such that, put it in the file for historical information. Looking at the differentiation on the cable TV fees with Verizon and Time Warner. Look at the UUT on the telephone tax and track that. And I would like to say, I think, I think that's got to be tracked very closely going out. Josh and I were in the audience prior to taking employment here, and it was very clear that, that the city council wants that.
But I would suggest that with, with an April first implementation date, probably...
A year.
Expect, expect something maybe six months after that, so I don't know.
And that's pretty typical with these, these companies, because of the case to, to change their, their mechanisms and their billing and everything. The red light, reevaluate locations.
On that, I'm sorry to interrupt. On that one, Dean, I don't, I don't know that that's something we need to have answered by next... And I would, I would suggest we, we ask the traffic commission to look into that.
Well, I think so far of the, of the four things I've got written down here, I don't think any of those are gonna impede us from the standpoint of moving it out of the budget.
Okay.
We've essentially said, we'd like some further information on the cable TV funds, UUT tracking, red light policy on audit, historical data.
Yeah.
Those are some items for down the road, but I don't think it's, unless you guys...
Troy had asked for some specific things to be emailed to him.
Follow-up, just maybe follow-up. We said we would do either in the weekly, and also emails too.
Yeah, I mean, the UUT, to me, honestly, intuitively, doesn't make sense for the hundred thousand dollar projection that's in front, giving, I mean, let's just go with what was said here, that we don't know where we're at, because we don't have data, then we don't have data. So we don't project up. We go and make it even more conservative, that the one percent of the six hundred thousand that we would normally get, or it's actually be about twenty percent of that, would potentially not be coming in, which means that a hundred thousand might be an overestimate in the forecast.
Couldn't we adjust that at mid-year, though?
Yeah, but, yeah, that's...
I mean, when we have real numbers.
Yeah, but if we do that, then we've planned to spend up to that, then how much have we spent? Or we've overplanned the revenue and spent up to something, and then we adjusted down, and now we don't have a way to cover that, and that's why I'm trying to get it first time through. On the cable TV thing, I think the second action, just to kind of go on top of that, was not only just the process, but the forecast methodology that we were using.
Methodology, I was gonna say, forty, the forty-fourty methodology. But, but thank you, I have to give clarification, Josh.
And you said that, I'm actually with the mayor on this, I, I'm wondering if the red flex thing belongs in the traffic commission? Is that what, the evaluation, or do, are you looking at from the impact on revenue?
I'm looking at it more the revenue aspect, and has it, has it achieved what the goals were set out? In other words, it's coming up nine years of this particular thing that you had. And you brought up the thing about, is it revenue stream force, or is it a behavior modification? Have we achieved that behavior modification?
Well, if not, obviously not, because the, the amounts are going up, right?
Well, but, but that's, that's part of the question as well. You know, you can track that based on the amount of citations that are being issued through it. If those are going up, they've gone down, reserve-wise, they've gone down from two reserves, I think, that we're looking at. And then the one reserve that's on the, on the red light at this particular point?
We have two working on it.
We do?
Yeah, two, two of our reserve officers work on that. And, and you know, just something that I might add, you know, we're, we're speculating the reason for the increase, and, and, and that was just something that we came up with, wondering if it has to do with the track, traffic volume due to the, the connector project. And our, and our answers are only speculative. But our red light enforcement officers, you know, who have a lot of contact with the violators, because they come in, they review their, the, the video, and they have offered to us just recently that they wonder if it's with, with a lot of publicity of other jurisdictions, LA, you know, Los Angeles, shutting down their cameras, if some of these violators are thinking that these aren't operational anymore. And that, you know, and, you know, that could be a reason for the increase in, in violations as well.
I think what, what I'm coming from on it, to help this analyst, is we need more information if we're gonna look at it from the standpoint of, have, have accidents gone down? Are we issuing more citations? I mean, those are, are, I think, easily obtainable figures from the standpoint of knowing how many we're doing. You, you may be a hundred percent correct, and that means we need to do a better job, public relations-wise, news media-wise, to say, red lights in Los Alamos are lying on well friends, and if you're not gonna follow them, they're gonna be looking at the citation or fine. But we don't know what it is. I mean, there's some significant increases over the last couple of years, and we're, we're speculating on why. I kind of go back, and I feel the same way with Troy, though. Is this suddenly replacing, is this a new revenue stream that we're looking at that will become independent in terms of the budget? There was a figure, and I don't recall it in this, in this original book that we got, that the amount of other citations is minuscule in comparison to nine or ten thousand dollars, or something like that. And gee, if we wiped out the red light camera, that's gonna be a big hit from the standpoint of revenue to the department. But was that the purpose of putting in the red lights? And somewhere we need to look at a balance, but I mean, I think it's a good point. There's still a lot of publicity out there on, on the red lights to begin with. Still annoying with some of the, the things that have happened in Chicago especially, which don't reflect out here, but publicity is there. And, and so I, I'm not opposed to the budget going forward with it in there. I just think at some stage we need to be looking at it, and figuring out where those numbers are coming from, and actually why.
But the action to staff or the council, I'm not, I, I wouldn't be supportive of us actually taxing this, Dean. I think we have a traffic commission in place. I think we wanna have an action to them. The, the city staff here has the information, and perhaps that'd be something that we can ask them to go look at. Because I agree with you, we need data, but, you know, here, here we're talking, you know, we spent fifteen minutes talking about this based on no data, other than, you know, you, you talked about the purpose of the thing, and I, I don't, I would, I would be very hard pressed to say we put this in to make revenues, right, to, to make money. I think we, it's a safety issue, otherwise, why would we do that? So, I think with that as a premise, then, what's, what are the facts and data behind it that need us, that causes us to then take some kind of action? So, I think we ought not to spend any more time, other than say it's a concern. Let's have the staff get with the traffic commission, and articulate the concern, and see what the actions might be. That's my put on this one, so, unless we wanna talk about it further.
You know, I, I think it's policy discussion rather than the, the traffic commission. I don't think red lights came through the traffic commission, but I don't know that for a fact, I have two thousand.
Okay.
If they start, but I think it's something that if we got more detail, we could be more comfortable with from the policy standpoint.
Okay.
And I don't know that the traffic commission really, at some point, if we're looking at...
Well, you, you, you're talking safety, safety of the intersection, and, you know, increased accidents in, in those. So I think that's, to me, the realm of the traffic commission.
Well, and locating new locations potentially for them.
Yeah, so, so again, if it's, if it's a policy, whether to have or have not, I believe that's, yeah, that would be our domain. But I think anything, as getting to the data...
Bring in detail back that says we need to, to consider doing something as would it, then I think look back to the traffic commission, yes, from that standpoint.
So I'm not sure what the direction then that you would have to staff is on this, on this issue.
More detail on why we have the increases. I think I'm looking at the number of citations, the amount of, of traffic lights that have increased. They haven't, so I, I don't know. There's obviously some reason that we've seen the increase over the last two or three years. We've speculated it's because of more traffic, and you've just brought up a good point about other cities getting publicity of the, the red light cameras, I think, so...
Okay.
That's out there, definitely. Another one that I had was from Dean, was investigate, keep, keep, keep the investigation on the online computers for business licenses and tracking that.
We're not going with the two people, or even the one person I could talk about.
No.
You still think we need to automate that some way?
But that's not, I don't think we need that for next week's budget session, is that correct? Okay, so I think if you can just hit those areas that, that are of concern to us for next week's meeting, the budget. So that's, that's the one. The other one...
Oh, okay.
On, on all of this so far, I mean, I don't see any needs to come back to it.
Richard had some.
Los Alamos Boulevard meeting, but I don't know, maybe that was... But I, just one last thing, was Richard's concern about that five hundred thousand. And just to reiterate, the seventy-one thousand from the county...
Rebate.
Admin rebate, Tony generously volunteered today to make up the other hundred thousand from the garage fund. So that would do, that, that could take care of the emergency generator, just wanted to...
Awesome.
Did you have something else, Richard?
Put that up there.
Yeah, you know, we have not, we have not discussed legal fees. We budgeted the exact same amount of legal fees as we had last year. If we're gonna have an EIR, EIR fight with experts and stuff like that, that's a foreseeable, that's a foreseeable expense that, that will be happening quickly here, and maybe that should also be considered in the budget. And we just, we use the exact same number as we did last year, and I don't, I see that number jumping considerably.
number jumping considerably if we have to go that route.
Well, that's, sounds like a reserve item, because that's, when it's unexpected and it's emergency, that's what reserves, and we hope to have a larger surplus, as we say, you know, at the end of the year as we do, but that's generally what you use reserves for, is also for unexpected litigation sometimes, or even EIR.
Greg, if I can tell you right now, we're going to need it in November, is it unexpected?
But if there's...
It is for the budget, because where do we come up?
If there's no EIR, then we don't need it, right? I mean...
Yeah, they've suspended the work on the EIR.
So, it's, you don't think we're going to face this problem during the year? We don't know, we're not going, we don't know what it is, right? There's been a lot of, I'll say talk, but has there been anything official?
No, we can look at it six months, too.
Yeah.
I'm just, we're spending more than we're taking in, and that concerns me in general.
Understand.
And then an answer that, oh, that comes against the reserve, we don't have that much reserve to spend.
Understand.
That's the point I'm trying to make.
But that is the discussion we had with regards to, if we needed to take steps to protect the city, that it would come from the reserves. So, I mean, that's not a new idea. How much did we spend on legal fees last year? Did we go over and above?
Yeah, it was like 2 something.
2 something, okay. And that's because we had...
Because we budgeted, I think, like 2 or 4.
155.
Then the extra, with some, a couple items. 11-12, we spent 191, yeah.
Okay. And in prior years, we've spent more than what we were budgeting, isn't that correct?
Yeah, 10-11, we were 147. 9-10, we're 152.
Okay, so, it's not uncustomary that you have situations that arise that, you know, like you said, at mid-year, we can adjust, but the amount that they gave us in closed session, if you remember, was not an excessive amount, and I don't know that it wouldn't be much more than what we've budgeted with the normal course of action that the city attorney would take coming to the meetings and all of those other things that they do for us.
Okay.
Again, not talking about specific strategy with where Richard's going, but I mean, let's just say categories of legal advice that's been discussed, CQ, you know, people that will actually come in and go through that. I mean, that's a very niche legal profession. We've seen a couple of numbers for different things come through. It seems like, I mean, if we wanted to have a value, it wouldn't be hard to calculate an estimate based on Kerry's or city attorney's perspective on, you know, and I would be interested just to see, I mean, it would be kind of flat-footed, even forget where we put it, whether it's in the general fund budget or reserve, a place in the reserve for it, to not have one, we probably should have an estimate of what we think the worst-case scenario, and not the worst case, a just moderately case, basic strategy amount to plan for some surge help, because it's almost like a car, if you know the thing's going to break down, we're going to have to put something aside.
They did give us a number, though.
We could ask them.
Do you remember?
That's a good idea.
Okay.
Remember.
All right, does that kind of wrap up, then, as far as the concerns? I don't know if yours were addressed, Troy?
Was Greg through all the actions?
I don't know, that's...
We keep that in mind.
Yeah, so, yeah, we keep on interrupting.
Oh, yes, yes, because what I have on here, the rest that I have, the direction is, if it's not for the budget, then we're not to keep on going.
They're just kind of future actions, but I think there were some specific ones, Josh...
I had a few more, but...
Yeah, Josh is going to send some information to us, I think, on some of the breakouts, and then when they're captured. So, and then Richard, I think, the ones that you had, I think, we'll hold those off, I think, you know, and have that, as a robust discussion on those items, okay? For next week.
Okay.
All right? With that...
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to acknowledge, Chief, I know you were out of town on vacation. I really appreciate you coming down here and making your presence known, and getting behind your department, and then getting able to be here to answer any questions we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, yes, Dean?
I just mentioned one other thing, the state comptroller cleared out yesterday, indicated that the runners, from their perception, or from their perspective, are beating the rest of us by about 12.4 percent. And I know Brown has said they're ready to go with a balanced budget, and he's still ignoring several billion dollars that exist there in unfunded mandates that they've been anticipating. So, as much as Sacramento wants to say everything at Roseland, it's not, and if we're listening to that particular patient, it's not going to happen.
Like you said, you know, show us the money, right? Where's that check first? So, we'll find out in 12 months, right?
Even the 70,000 in the county, because they have it or something.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead, thank you very much, Josh, and Greg, and the rest of staff. We'll go ahead and close this meeting and adjourn it till next Monday at a regular council meeting. Your adjournment.
Yeah.